Sback using the eighth grade fall and winter Eames Web scores as our data. We took this unproportional data, found a line of best fit, calculated the slope and Y intercept, and put it into both standard and slope intercept forms. Now we are taking I E Vs throughout the week in preparation for the Sback testing. In the language arts class, we are presenting our cities in groups of four or more to a panel of judges on Friday, April 29th. Our cities have to at least one renewable energy source, an egress, a constitution, and more. We are beginning on A webs testing on Wednesday, April 27th. The April book report is due on Friday, April 29th. And will be the final one for students who have an average of eighty-five or higher in the February, March, and April book reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the last meeting's minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-first, 2022 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second? Thank you. Jenny? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now the administrators and superintendents' reports. First, we have Mr. Brian Apperson.
All right, so our student of the month for, I'll start out with, for March, and I apologize, I accidentally had November on one of the pieces there, but... Our March students of the month, they are nominated by their teachers for consistently displaying our values of cougar pride by being safe, respectful, responsible, and trustworthy. The honorees for March are kindergarten Donovan Schlender, grade one Matthew Broshu, grade two Paige McNeil, grade three Jaden Edmund, grade four Mick Hogan, grade five Zoe Boxhold, grade six Nicholas Ruiz, grade seven Annalise Baird, and grade eight Aubrey Ricard. So congratulations to them. Also, testing information, as our student ambassadors had mentioned, we do have our English language arts underway. And students are working extremely hard. We see a lot of, a lot of hard work going into that. Math will start next week, primarily in the month of May. And technology has been an extreme help. The fact that we have the one-to-ones, obviously still some getting used to different things, but overall, having the technology in the building is, is making it a lot more... A lot easier to get everything done in a timely manner and not have to keep rushing and switching around, so... We're very pleased with the start, and I'm sure the kids are gonna do fantastic.
Thank you. And next, we have Mr. Scott Chapanir with special education.
Yes, good evening. So I'm here to report the special education numbers for the month of April 2022. The numbers at the Lisbon Central School increased two from eighty-one to eighty-three. And then, in our eighteen to twenty-two numbers, we had a student no longer continue with special education services, that was her elected choice. That was a student that was attending sharp training, so that decreased our number for, by one. So our total numbers for April 2022 is one hundred and sixteen. That's an increase of one from the previous month. Also, I would like to report on the child fine that we had, child fine screening for preschool that was held on April seventh at nine a.m. We had seventeen families register for the child fine screening. We had sixteen completed. One of them, we had a preschool student that was a little too shy, and we're trying to reschedule that. We had nine staff members take part in that event, and everything went well.
Great, thank you.
The cost, off the top of my head, I don't have the cost, but it was very low, sharp training. This student moved to us from another district. They were scheduled to attend it only twice a week. Sharp Training knew that the student, well, eighteen to twenty-two-year-old, did not have good attendance coming in when they moved here, so they were only charging us once per week. And then, when the student didn't attend, they were just doing the administrative cost, they were giving us a reduced rate on that one day. So it was a very low expense. She did not attend very often. So that's why it was discontinued, she elected to discontinue. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, next, we have Cindy with the Supply Chain Assistance Fund.
I just want to report on the state of Connecticut, put out earlier in April that the state received a billion dollars newly funding for some of the costs for the lunch program. Lisbon Central School will be receiving twelve thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars from that money. And there are some restrictions that are put on that money, so with conversations with Mike and Sally, we have decided, we're proposing that we use that money to cover the cost of milk for next year. That's one of the approved costs. It's very unlimited as to what you can be approved for, so that is the proposal, to use that twelve thousand dollars we receive to cover the cost of milk. It'll almost cover the full cost for the year, but it'll be a little bit short.
Is that it? Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. And Sally Keating with the superintendent's report.
Me first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just want to let you know, we had a few P M.'s done this month. We had Brooks Environmental in for the six-month inspection on the asbestos. Everything looks good. B T Lindsay was in over the break, they serviced all the air conditioner units. They had two condensing units that failed, they replaced them while they were on site. We also had S one mechanical here. They installed twenty-five of the clip-on air purifiers on a ductless splits. And we also had access N S M here, and they serviced a wheelchair lift. Everything looks good.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you. Sorry, I skipped you. Okay, now we have Sally Keating with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do have the pleasure of talking about Mr. Christopher Sheldon to you tonight as the principal of Lisbon Central School, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Sheldon comes to us with teaching certification and experience in math and administrative experience at the high school level, middle, elementary school levels. He has been a district's teacher of the year, he has published in the area of math, he has been a member of many committees, and the list goes on. He was the first-level interview team's unanimous top choice. He was then sent to the second-level interviewing team and was unanimously voted endorsed as a candidate to become L C S principal beginning July first. He came with very, very strong references and multiple references, and his enthusiasm and commitment to educating students was readily apparent. And we are very, very excited to have him be the principal of Lisbon Central School beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two. I also would like to talk about the grant that we just received for the cafeteria. And I'm so happy that Mike Rossi, the food service director, is here. Mike, if you could raise your hand for the audience, because I don't know if everyone knows you. He's very dedicated to Lisbon Central School and the entire school community. As mentioned in the lunchbox to the board, we are rewarded, awarded, sorry, a grant of twelve thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty-five, there's some change, to purchase some very needed equipment for the cafeteria. Mike is here tonight, and Mike, I wanted you here for a lot of reasons, but one is to thank you, because I don't do it enough, for bringing this grant to our attention. It means a lot to us. Not a lot of districts got it. Megan Jenkins, I think the audience probably knows Megan, Brian McGlue, Mike and I, we wrote the grant, with Megan and Mike actually taking the lead. And we were very, very fortunate to receive it. There weren't a lot of districts that got it, and we were lucky, but I think a lot of it is based upon your knowledge and experience of the cafeteria and what's needed. I believe, but you can jump in, Mike, my memory, we did purchase two open air refrigerated devices, a prep station, two warming units with the money. And, and again, I, I just thought it was so admirable of you, because he's the one that kept going to the people, the authorities, saying, "Okay, did we get it? Uh, did we get it? Did we get it?" And finally, we got the email, so, Mike, thanks a lot. Brian, Megan's not here, she did a lion, she did a lot. She did a lot of the writing, and I gotta give credit where it's due. And that's it.
That's fabulous. Thank you. Okay. Is that all?
Yes, that's all I have.
Then Betty, have any questions for Mrs. Keating?
Um, are you going to address what was asked you by the parents that are here about Mr. Sheldon?
No, I'm not. Not, not in this forum. I said... Oh!
I thought you talked to me.
I asked her if she was going to address the questions that were asked by the parents that were here tonight regarding Mr. Sheldon.
And the answer is protocol, Katie, in the terms of this arena, is we don't address the questions. I always do what the board directs me to do, and also I would consult, at this point, I believe, the Board of Ed Attorney. So I want to go on record saying that. Oh, yes, I will address it in terms of the Board of Ed Attorney. Are there any other questions, Katie? Or anyone else around the table?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I can hear you.
I, I didn't hear that last part.
Thanks.
Oh.
It's not working. Sorry. When you address the Board of Ed Attorney, how will parents be able to know what the outcome was?
I don't know yet, I have to hear from the board what they want me to do, if anything. And the Board of Ed Attorney would tell me at that point, if I do address it, what to do.
Okay.
And it could be nothing, it could be something.
Right.
That's why...
Just asking us for, so they know that they will be...
You just want them to know, and I think that's courteous of you.
Yeah.
I do.
I just want them to know that they're, they're being heard.
Oh, yes, I, I did hear them.
So you're gonna get back to the web, ma'am?
I, I don't know, Mr. Chidick, that's not what I said. And I don't, I can't engage with you. I'm not going to address the issue, sir.
So, excuse me, public comment is complete for the beginning of the meeting? We can readdress this at the end of the meeting? That's okay. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. The approval of the monthly expenditures. Can I get a motion to approve the monthly expenditures, expenditures for March 2022, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-four cents?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, what's the total amount you're gonna get back to the town?
That's the next section.
Sorry.
You're getting one section ahead of you. Um, okay. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the monthly expenditures for March 2022, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, two hundred and, seven hundred and ninety-three, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and five cents?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, for the financial statements, can I have a motion to approve the financial statement for March 2022, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, as presented by the administration? This is the final report for this budget year, returning thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents to the town.
I'll second.
Any additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And can I have a motion to approve the financial statement for March 2022, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, as presented by the administration?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and... New business, old business?
Yep.
Um, let's see, discussion regarding cafeteria prices, counts, and possible action. Mr. Rossi will lead the discussion?
Yeah, we, we invited... We, we invited Mike, and also we met with Cindy, and Cindy's gonna lead it off, from what I remember, and Mike will then just chime in.
So at the last board meeting, folks asked us for some history of lunch prices and the amount of students that were being served. That has been provided to folks. So I know we had talked about the budget at the last meeting for the cafeteria moving forward, so I don't want to speak for Mike, but I think that the question was asked about if we could increase the cost of breakfast and lunches. That's kind of a two-tier decision, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's also, it's a state decision, and then as well as a Lisbon Central School decision, based on what we think the possible needs might be. It's hard to know what, what's gonna happen once the, the S S O comes to an end in October, and how many students are gonna be purchasing meals through the school. So that's kind of why we're looking at the pricing we're looking at, and also projecting increase of costs of about twenty-three percent, based on our current expenses for this fiscal year.
Good.
Yep.
Any questions, comments? This is just questions from the board.
Cindy's gotta talk into the mic, I don't think the audience can hear either.
Not, not raising it. We, we are, we were, before S S O, we were at three fifty, and I don't...
It's gonna be really a difficult year, you're going off of free lunches on pay. And basically, we, we're gonna cut up our couch right now. So, I'll cut, I'll cut some. Originally, I had more hours to fill, I'm gonna cut them and take on the hours for, for some of the staff. Some of the people were not bringing back to try to save money, but we also have that grant for the melt, we'll save some money on. I did manage to save, I'm going to save quite a bit of money for surplus for trying to cover the cost for all the increases on, you know, food supply chain is horrible. I, I applied for all the grant, for all the variances I could, because we can't get the right kind of food, like, say, a fifty percent cold rain, or something made in this country, because I'm supposed to buy everything from the United States, just can't get it. So I applied for all the variances I could for all of that food, so hopefully, we come out okay.
So the way I read this from the state... So the, the way I read this from the state, this operational memorandum, have you, have you looked at maybe reducing the price to 318?
I, I-
Because it seems like it's financially advantageous.
I wouldn't go to 18, because it's very hard to deal with.
Yeah, 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 but, less than 318.
But the three, what happens is, they have what they call the PLA, PLA, it's Paid Lunch Equity.
Yep.
And in that Paid Lunch Equity, there's a lot of formulas that I don't even figure out. I leave, I'm gonna leave it up, up to somebody who knows a lot more than I do. So, and what, what it actually is, is that they don't want, they, they do not want free kids' free reimbursement to be more than a paid one. And right now, we're gonna be getting, our free is gonna be $2, $3.66. So they don't want free to, free, 3.66, and then our, if we go to 318, our reimbursement is 35 cents. That brings us up to 340, 353, which is still a little under.
Okay.
So, Mike, we could probably go to, to 35, and make it, uh, you know, 40, no, 35 would be, nope, 30. That would give it to 365, but that's about the lowest I can go.
I thi- I think we should take a better look at this. It seems like there's a breaking point there.
Yep.
Where we can get more funding if we charge less, the way I read it.
The only funding I'm, you can't get any more funding. The only funding I'm gonna get is from free kids, and we only have so many free kids, and we reduce kids. So that's my, my money that's coming in, and I get 35 cents per pay if we, if we do. But our counts are gonna be down to 150, to maybe 190. That's what we were doing before we, before we went on and pressed us up. So-
Okay.
I had to figure out, there's a hundred less kids.
Yep.
So that really puts it down there. And, you know, food is huge right now, and pay will always goes up anyway.
Yep. All right, well, I guess we'll just watch it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would be more than willing when everything comes in, and, and right now, I just wrote what they said, and the, the guidance for Paid Lunch Equity from the state is not ready yet. They'll be sending the additional guidance for SFS, for SFAs to comply with the Paid Lunch Equity sometime in '22 to '23. So I'm not even sure when it's gonna come out there. Way behind on everything.
So, Mike, as Ian said, and I think you said this in the meeting, you're gonna monitor this.
I'll monitor.
Yeah, just so that they-
Yeah, but before we do anything, we'll come to the board, and if you choose to go down to the 330, that's fine, we may, we may, we may, anyway, one way or the other.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike and Cindy? Okay, so next, we have the update regarding the fire department project. And I think this is you, Ian?
Yeah, so, I had sent a, well, after we talked-
It's both of us, yes. Go ahead, Ian.
After we talked to the board at the last meeting, I sent an email to Tom Sparkman and Wayne Donaldson, just giving them a broad overview of the things that we were looking at for a capital improvement project, as far as expanding the parking lot, changing the egress, so we had a one-way traffic through the parking lot, putting an awning over the bus drop-off area, and the stairs coming down to the main door. And there were a couple other small things. So, I didn't hear back from him for like, three weeks, and then he called me, and he was kind of taken back by the email. He said that it was too broad. I said, "Well, we weren't looking for you to sign off on the project. I was just looking for direction, you know, how do we approach this? And, you know, is it a town project? Is it a school board project?" And he, he was adamant that it was a school board project. I said, "Well, you know, the town owns the school and the parking lot. I would think it'd be a town project." And, and he reiterated that it would be a school project. So, I said, "Well, our, our goal, and the reason why we, we're talking about it, is we were trying to leverage, you know, the fact that they were doing major construction right next door, and maybe we could save some money, you know, by doing both projects at the same time." And, and his response was that, you know, "Those plans have already been submitted to the state and to the P and Z, and, and that they wouldn't open them up again, so we're pretty much on our own." So, the feeling I get from him, he, he's not interested in, in the project or helping us with the project, so I don't think leveraging that other project at this time's gonna work out too well. And that's where we left it. So, I mean, if you wanna, if the board wants to continue to pursue it, we can do that. We would have to hire our own architect, you know, to develop conceptual plans, and then we'd have to submit him to P and Z and to the state, because that's a state road out there. Or we could just leave it alone for now, but, I don't know, I've always been concerned about the driveway going in and out of here.
Yeah.
Especially traffic coming up, you know, from the firehouse, the current firehouse. I don't think it's good. I'd like to see a sidewalk put out front between, you know, the school and, and the town hall, and he pushed back on that, too, so I don't think we're getting any support. But, we asked a question, right?
You know, you did a great job. I thought you did a great job. Just the way it panned out.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for doing the legwork.
That's all right.
Question, having not seen the plans, is the parking at the new firehouse such that it is expected that it may be utilized like the current firehouse and other areas where certain times there will be used for school parking? Do you know, does anybody know this? I don't, I don't know that, I apologize, I haven't looked at the plans, but the size of the parking lot?
From what I've seen, that parking lot's huge.
Okay.
But it's really not, it's not close enough to the school unless they put like, a path through there or something. You know, and the other problem was that, you know, that dropping kids off and picking them up at the senior center is a problem, right? It's not good. You get cars going every which way. And, you know, I thought it'd be better if we could just have one-way traffic, come in and go out a separate driveway, but he said it would cause all kinds of, it would require all kinds of permits from the state. And I figured since they must have already gone through that process by developing plans for the firehouse, that they might impart some knowledge, but they didn't.
All I will say is that the, the current senior center drop-off is so much better than, and this is credit to Brian and his crew out there, at least in the mornings and stuff, that it's so much better than it used to be as far as the flow of things down there. But I guess my only concern is, if there is parking up there that becomes like the parking down here, where it may not be intended for people flowing back and forth, if it's the case, for safety's sake, the only thing I would hope, and I don't, is that some kind of fence would have to take you to the circle almost, so that people aren't crossing the parking lot too close to the road, because I think that would present somewhat of a, I don't know, if they're coming, if they're walking in, I don't know if there's, how the connectivity would be.
Well, my thought was, that house that they tore down next to-
Yep.
-the current driveway, that they could move the driveway further up 138, and that would be the inn, and they would loop around, we'd get rid of the circle altogether, loop around in front of the awning, and then go back out a separate driveway. But, they didn't seem too happy with that proposal.
Yeah.
Thanks, though.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you did a lot of work. Thank you. You did.
Okay, next, we have discussion regarding budget projections.
Um, I think we'll do end of, maybe the end of the year activities.
Oh, I did it again.
Well, it's, it's easy to do.
I'm sorry.
It's squished together. But Brian, did you want to take this? Okay, all right.
So, several end of the, end of the year activities, that we're hoping to try to get as normal as we can. So, looking through like National Junior Honor Society, we are planning to do that on the same date as next month's board meeting. So that would be May 16th, so they'll do that prior ahead, prior to the board meeting, so that way the students who are inducted can make their way in here and be introduced. So we're excited for that. And the plan right now is to do it outdoors in the courtyard. We're still figuring out the logistics, so that's the plan there. The superintendent's award, we'll do that the following Monday, on the 23rd. Again, the plan is to do that outdoors in the courtyard. We, we do, we will reserve the cafeteria as well, so that way, if there's rain or inclement weather, we can go in there. Field day is scheduled for May 26th. That's also the day that the eighth graders go to Boston, so we're excited for that. And there's a rain day for the field day, or rain, rain date for the field day, a little bit after that, wouldn't obviously be the same, so hopefully weather is good. But, you know, we do have that in early June the next week. And then graduation is scheduled for the 13th, which is a Monday. And we're having it earlier than we have in the past, about the same as what we had before, to give time for everything, but we are hoping to have that outdoors, and with some modifications from last year, but we felt it was really successful last year. And, and we'll have to have a rain date for that, though, because that'll be a lot of people there, so. So that's what we have.
Good.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, you did a great job organizing it all.
Any questions for Brian, before we move on? Okay, now, budget projections. Cindy?
So I think I got it to everybody, but I gave you a couple of pages. The first couple of pages are just projections as of April 18th, for money that we expended, money that's encumbered, and then some possible projections looking out. If you look at all those projections, after some of the reimbursement for excess costs, we're looking at about $46,000 we'll have. But just want to be clear that when we were doing the budget earlier this year, the board did ask us to plan for some technology updates, which is, is about $23,000, as well as supplies being purchased. So that money is already included prior to the $46,000. So, that's what the board asked us to do, so those figures aren't in there. And again, these are, you know, just based on current expenses and ideas looking out. And then the other page is just a list of potential projects, items to use them and that money for. Obviously, the list of items is, is more money than we are expected to have at the end of the year, so we'll be prioritizing those. We've been talking with Brian McGlue about a lot of the different projects needing to happen, so once we get closer to the end of the fiscal year and have a better sense of the actual number in the May meeting, I think we'll have a prioritized list of what's gonna be done, how much money left over. Any questions about?
Your mic cut off.
I think your mic cut off.
Your mic cut off.
Oh, you, you know what, this one might, you take this one, Cindy, this one's worth.
Sorry, is that better? Any questions about some of the projections or expenses?
So, this description says description priority. It's not already a prioritized list?
Sorry, no, I, sorry, no, that, it was, well, a couple of them are priorities, so custodial supplies are priorities, the contracted services for special ed, and then, based on the amount of money we have left over, we'll go through and look at what we need to prioritize. The bathrooms were a big item, the fifth and sixth grade bathrooms, but it's just gonna matter how much we have, because that was a project that was in the budget that got taken out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, Cindy.
Anything else to add? Anything else to add?
No.
No. Okay. Okay, so next, we have the LCS math curriculum, which I think is back to Mr. Apperson.
Yep, you're right.
All right, so, you know, we're definitely working forward to looking at different curriculum materials in our upper grades. We did have a PD prior to the break, where we looked at curriculum formats and looked at where we want to go forward, once we start rewriting and updating curriculum as we go forward. But I did want to just share a couple of examples of student work to kind of show how, you know, we're talking about all the test prep, and a lot of technology is involved, and, and doing all those things, but there's more than just that. So instead of doing a performance task-type activity on the computer, we're doing them in real life as well. So I have a description of these two different types of graphs, which we can pass around here, but we have box-and-whisker plots and scatter plot graphs. This is from Mrs. Nolan. So she said, "Box-and-whisker plot is another way to display data sets. Students in seventh grade learned this standard within their statistical unit. After learning the different pieces of the plot, along with the calculating the numbers required to plot using the data, students took the seventh grade AIMS Web scores and created plots for fall and winter scores. They can analyze the data and be able to determine growth." So, this is our box-and-whisker here, so if you want to pass that around, you can do that. And then scatter plot graph for eighth grade. Scatter plot graphs are taught in eighth grade within the statistical unit. This standard incorporates several prior standards from eighth grade, linear equations, slope proportionality. After developing an understanding of this type of graph, students in eighth grade took to the fall and winter AIMS Web scores and created a graph. The graphs all contain the same data, however, the lines of best fit vary. Students were able to see how real numbers in the world, real world are applied to graphs for analyzing. Students were able to see how their data set the scores for the entire grade, showing growth in their learning. So this is an example of that. But again, just looking for, you know, how, how would we use this in the real world, sort of thing, and, and what, what would be some examples. So the kids worked very, very hard, and as you're walking through the junior high wing, you can see the, more examples of that. It's just a couple we wanted to bring to highlight here, but they're still hanging up over there. So, we're continuing to move forward here, so making some great progress, and the students are, are responding very, very well.
Good.
That's pretty impressive.
When you gonna make a decision on the curriculum?
I'm not sure exactly. I think we're getting close. We're hoping to have it, you know, by the end of this year, so that way we can prep to get it set for next year.
Yeah, we're, we're very close. We'll probably talk to you about it the next meeting. Yep.
Good.
Any other questions for Brian regarding the math curriculum, math graphs? Those are pretty full.
They are. Kids did a good job.
I like the color coding, too.
Yeah, the kids did great.
He just wants to check out his kids' test scores.
Next is the discussion regarding salary agreements. So I need a motion to move agenda item number 10F.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To move item 10F to after item 14?
Yep, yes. All those in favor? Opposed? Committee reports? Don't think we have any?
Nope.
Additions to the agenda?
None.
Next, agenda planning? Anything to add to the May agenda?
Uh, math update again. I think we're going to be bringing the curriculum, the question that Ian asked. And then more salary agreements. We don't have them all tonight for executive.
Okay.
And projections.
Projections, okay.
Come, he's trying to tell me.
Was it just the three items?
Well, I mean, there'll probably be more, but that's all we're adding, saying tonight.
Yes. Okay, and then we move again to public comment. The same guidelines apply as they did at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, Adam Tredick again, 119 Strawberry Street. I please apologize, my ignorance and for stepping out of turn. I'm, I'm not familiar with how this process goes. Can you hear me, ma'am?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with how the process goes.
That's okay.
It's my first meeting.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that I, and maybe I'll speak for we, but that I'm clear on, on what I'm requesting the individuals in this room. I, I am requesting, I'm not demanding, I like to use the word demanding, but a, a response of some type as to why Mr. Sheldon's incident in 2002 was overlooked, and those that sat on the board made the decision to allow him to be our current principal. I just want to ask you, are you telling me that you're not required to respond? Somebody in this room is not required to respond to a complaint from a parent.
Not at this time.
I'm, I'm not saying in this room, ma'am, I understand that, but at some point in time after you consult with the school attorney, or whatever it may be, I'm, I'm just asked, I don't, I don't know how the process works. It's my first time ever coming before the school to ask for, for anything of a concern. It's my first time ever coming before the school to ask for, for anything of a concern. I, I'm asking, I'm, I'm just asking for you. If I came to you with any other concern, is the school or somebody in this room, either that the taxpayers pay somebody's salary or we elect you individuals, is somebody required to respond to a concern from a parent?
We're not to, I really shouldn't be doing this as superintendent, but we don't have, um, the board chair here. We're not to engage with, I'm not even to answer, just hear me out. I, I think I understand what you're asking. Um, I will say this, it depends upon what the question is and what area of confidentiality or whatever it goes into. And that's why I do not wanna give you, I'm not supposed to anyway. But if I could, I don't wanna give you an answer on this, because I think I'm at the point that I have to go to the board attorney. Because there's-
That's understandable, and I, I don't like, trust me, I don't like to conduct business like this.
Okay, I, I believe you.
That I don't know of, I, I like to go, you know, face to face or speak with an individual, but-
Right, right.
That didn't happen, I emailed yourself, it didn't happen.
You didn't email me.
And, and the response is, whatever, I'm not gonna get into it.
I gave you a-
I, I understand you may not respond tonight, there's a lot that went into that. But, very clearly, again, I'll repeat my, the question I'm asking you. I'm asking the individuals in this room, especially those that had sat on that committee, why Mr. Sheldon was selected as our principal after knowing of the incident in 2002. And I'm, I'm asking for a response from somebody in this room, please.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey, J. Travolci, 166 Strawberry Street. Um, just wanna point that the questions and concerns that were raised by the three individuals earlier are also the concerns and questions to a lot of parents here and, and the parents behind me that I would like to request that they either raise their hands or stand up if they share the same concerns or, uh, questions. Thank you.
I think we should, but- Any other public comment? Then we will move to executive session?
Oh, wait a minute, I think there's someone.
Okay.
She changed mind.
Beth Havens, 114 Kinsman Hill Road. I moved here five years ago for the school system, hands down. That's the only reason I moved here. It wasn't for my house, it wasn't for the yard, it wasn't for anything but the school system. I feel like I only come to these meetings when there's issues. And I feel like every time I've been to one of these meetings, nothing ever gets answered. We don't, we aren't heard. You say you hear us, but you, you don't respond to any of us. Like, there's no, all of us parents have great concern, not even just for this. We're talking about the pronouns, that's crazy. It's, it's full-blown crazy that this is even an issue nowadays. Like, like, life isn't hard enough for these kids. Now you're giving them more reason to have a hard childhood, let them be kids. Why do we have to have pronouns? We didn't have pronouns when we were little, like, and why are, why are we handing out pronoun sheets? I, I didn't even know about this till just tonight. I, I've heard that there's, there's a trend. My, my daughters came home today and said that one of their friends broke up with their boyfriends because she was gay. She's 11 years old. There's, there, I understand some kids feel that way at 11 years old. But the percentage that it is now over, it was five years ago, is crazy. But we're promoting it in school. I don't wanna homeschool, but, at this point, like, and my child says, you know, she said to me, "Mom, just let her be normal." Like, it's fine, it's normal. And I'm like, it's, when you come to me and you're 15 years old, that's normal. But if you feel that way when you're older and that's, you still feel that way, I'm, I'm riding with you. At 11 years old, that should not be an issue. I should not have trouble talking to my child about why, and I don't even wanna say it's not normal, but it's not. It's, it's not normal that my child thinks that gay is a thing at 11 years old. Or, or the pronoun, that's even deeper. I, I haven't even had to go there yet, but it's, I, I just feel like none of these things, as, as parents, all the times I've been this year, have, we haven't been heard. Like, we're, we're not involved anymore. And I feel like something needs to change. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Jessica Walker. Um, I live at 81 Kinsman Hill Road. And all I'm asking of you guys is to look into this new principal. If it's true facts, how do we deal with it? Um, I know I'm looking into moving my daughter out of this school, because there's parents that don't think your kid can be gay at 10 years old. If my daughter comes out as gay, she should be welcome here. And she's not. I'm bisexual and my pronouns are her and she. And you know what? That's how it is. That's how today is. People didn't feel welcome in the 90s or the 60s. We're welcoming everyone now. That's all I have to say, thank you. I'm just gonna leave it at this. One man's delusions do not become my reality because you sit here and tell me that that is normal. End of story.
Any other public comment? Okay, now we will move to executive session?
Yes.
And we will-
Yep.
Who are we including with us?
Well, there's a list, actually, of people. Um, let me just see something here. Colleen, do you mind giving out the, okay?